Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 6th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Interim deputy fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. We have a motion to amend the agenda. Motion to the amended agenda to add item to new business letter I, allowing action by council on this additional item, consideration of a resolution authorizing a claim for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Citizens comment agenda-related items.
Liz Lasky from the Parks Commission. And there's four people tonight requesting reappointment to the Parks Commission. And I just want to stand up for them. I've been on many commissions before. These four people have done an amazing job. We're in the middle of many grants and projects. And if there's any way I'd like to see these four appointed, they're generous with time, ideas, and their own money. They recently, one of them bought balls, basketballs to place into the parks. Another one paid for basically the open house, which was several hundred dollars after the disc golf. They're amazing people. So just request the reappointment of all four. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Smith, 353 First Street. I'm here to speak in favor of appointment of Steve Fostick for a full term on the Housing Commission. Since our appointment to the Housing Commission in January, we've covered a lot of ground, but there's a lot more left to cover. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda, all items on the consent, all agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, consideration of a temporary activity permit for signage and polling locations during elections, consideration of Manistee High School homecoming parade. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none, new business. Consideration of zoning ordinance Z23-02. The Planning Commission has drafted language to the zoning ordinance to reference the Historic District Commission Guidelines Number Two, signage within the City of Manistee zoning ordinance in Article 15-C-3, Central Business District, and Article 21 signs. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this amendment as an ordinance. Two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance D23-02. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the City of Manistee Planning Commission Bylaws Amendments. The proposed amendment to the bylaws addressed the recommendations from the boards and commissions, training strategy provided by the RRC. This amendment also includes adding conflicts of interest, correspondence, and presentation speakers to 3.9 Order of Business due to the Planning Commission having these as regular agenda items at each meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the proposed Planning Commission bylaw amendment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the City of Manistee Historic District Commission bylaw amendments. The proposed amendment to the bylaws addresses the recommendation from the boards and commission, training strategy provided by the RRC. This amendment also includes adding conflicts of interest to 3.7 Order of Business due to the Historic District Commission having this on a regular agenda item at each meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the proposed Historic District Commission bylaw amendment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Like I'm reading the same page twice. Here we go. Consideration of the City of Manistee Zoning Board of Appeals bylaw amendments. The proposed amendment to the bylaw addresses the recommendation from the boards and commission, training strategy provided by the RRC. This amendment also includes adding conflict of interest to 3.10 Order of Business to keep consistent with the Planning Commission and Historic District Commission, who have this at a standing agenda item each meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve this proposed zoning Board of Appeals bylaw amendment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Parks Commission bylaws revisions. Each year, the Parks Commission reviews and approves or recommends revisions to its bylaws. This year, the Commission recommended several changes after being presented to council on April 18th, 2023, and being moved to a later meeting for further discussion. The Parks Commission made additional changes at request of council. The city attorney has reviewed all revisions. At this time, council could take action to approve the update to the Parks Commission bylaws. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I really appreciate the changes and the time that they put in to revise them. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a 2024 Category B grant application. The Michigan Department of Transportation notified the city of a grant program that was, that has been created to assist with paving streets for communities with of less than 10,000. The maximum grant amount is 250,000 with a 50-50 match. The city has identified eligible street segments with proposed utility work already scheduled in the city's transportation improvement program for the 2024 construction and will utilize the project as match money. The city has currently budgeted for the full amount of the 2024 project with the city funds or by other funding sources. The grant application is for 250,000 and would help to reduce the 2024 road improvement cost from the city funds. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution authorizing Jeff McCula to act as an agent on behalf of the city and sign the project agreement. Commits the city to providing funds for the portion of the 2024 street improvement project for Lincoln Street that would be, that would not be covered by the grant or by funding, and commits the city to a maintenance program for design life of the facilities constructed. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. It seems odd to me that this department had going to sign that and commit funding on behalf of the city when normally it would be the manager, the mayor, and the clerk. I don't know that the department can commit funding. I'd like to see that signature be somebody else.
So with these, with the MDOT, with these particular grant applications, in the past, we've allowed DPW director to sign, but council has to grant that authority. We could make it the city manager sign, so it's up to council.
I'd prefer the city manager sign it personally.
Okay.
I agree.
So do we need to make a motion to amend it?
Should, yes.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to amend that to allow the city manager and the clerk to sign rather than the department director.
Second.
Heather, could you please take role?
Hold on.
Sorry.
It was the city manager.
Yeah, the clerk.
Was it city manager and the clerk to sign? Or just the city?
What do we normally do? Doesn't it take two people?
Usually, it's the mayor and the clerk to most contracts.
Typically, it's, I thought it was typically two. I thought it was just to commit money, it was two people. So I would say the mayor and the clerk then. That's what the paperwork's going to say. What's it?
I think they might just have a signature line for one with the MDOT, so I'm going to check with that.
Councilman Bachman, the difference on this is that MDOT requires the city to designate a street administrator and the DPW director, and Manistee is the street administrator. So that's why this, the resolution would have the DPW director sign that grant application. The resolution comes from council, and council is the one that's committing to the match funds and to maintain the street in the future. If that helps the clarification.
I understand my comfort level just is different than that. So who would you have sign it, Mr. Campbell?
I can see if it's appropriate for me to sign it and then Jeff to act as a street administrator, whatever's needed. So I did look at these in the past.
I didn't put Jeff as a street administrator?
Correct. We could do that.
Can I say that, please?
City manager with the DPW director as a street administrator.
Yeah. Thank you.
So we will first vote on, okay, so we're right now voting on the amended motion, the motion to amend, excuse me. Councilmember Bachman. Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. And now the motion, the original motion as amended. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. 2023-2024 fiscal year budget amendment request. Mayor Sullivan, supported by Mayor Protem James Grabowski, have requested to amend the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget to eliminate the community survey allotting the 20,000 to building maintenance instead. At this time, council could take action to approve the budget amendment request and allocate 20,000 to the budget maintenance repair, maintenance repair budget eliminating the community service in the 2023 fiscal year budget. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you tell us what's going to get, what's going to get maintained with that repair budget? What are we going to do with it, please? We're switching it to 20,000 to the maintenance repair?
So it's going to go, if I'm not mistaken, it's going to go to, like if Mark Neeson needs to have somebody?
Going to go to staff?
Yes, other than to do like a 1099, to do repairs and stuff on buildings.
So we're going to hire a contractor, independent contractor to work with Mark rather than? How does that fit in with that half-time person at the DPW? That's not going to happen then?
So we have a new Parks employee. The original budget, we looked at adding staff with a half-time person for building maintenance. This would be using a contractor, the same person that we would have at part-time and kind of trying out and helping. Mark's working on the building here at the window frames. This will have another person to work on projects throughout the city, preventative maintenance.
Yeah, I think that's great. I just, do we still have, we didn't change the number of employees in DPW then?
We added a Parks employee this year.
In the budget?
Yes.
This doesn't change that?
It does not.
This adds 20 additional thousand, correct?
Correct. To building maintenance. Correct.
Okay. So we're pretty close to a full-time employee, aren't we, between a half-time employee and another 20,000?
So the Parks employee is a full-time, and then this would be kind of just additional building maintenance labor.
So is that a temporary position? Because when that 20,000's gone, are we eliminating that?
So this is just contractual. So it's up to 20,000 to work with an individual for building maintenance. So it's not adding an employee. It's adding.
Fiscal year, we're going to want to know what project need to be done. If we need an additional person, how they're going to use them rather than just roll it every year, roll it in there, correct?
Yes.
Makes sense to me.
Yep, we can do that.
So if we eliminate the community survey part, I guess, I get it, but I guess I'm a little concerned about that because I feel like we're taking something away. So is there a way we can still do some type of seeking community input that wouldn't be cost prohibitive? Whether we put something out there, like for this time period, if you have suggestions or concerns or anything like that, could you mail it in? Could you email it? Is there a way we could create like a mailbox that that could go to during that time? Because I guess I just, I worry about the public perception. And personally, I don't know that I agree with taking away an opportunity for community to provide that input and gather that data.
Well, we have, oh, sorry, go ahead. Is there a section on that, that little app that we started with concerns? I forgot what it's called.
So there are, yeah, there is an other category. There's an, and see Click Fix. So there's various categories, you know, if there's issues to be addressed. So we do have an other category, which is a catch-all. We could add one for suggestions or something like that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm not 100% aware what the data was being collected on that community survey before. So I agree, like maybe the app would work for what that is. But I also don't know what all the questions were. So I don't know if the app would.
Yeah, so, and I think so, you know, in other communities I've worked in, in Warren in particular, they did a community survey. These are statistically valid, which is different from just kind of a suggestion box where you can also, you know, run ballot language by people if we wanted to do a road millage or something like that to see how that, so it's more data than just kind of an ad hoc suggestion. So this is, yeah, I mean, we can definitely do something with an other or suggestions in that app for people to send in.
We also have, I mean, all of our emails are available. The website's available. This is a public forum, so people can come and give their suggestions.
Right. I just, with the way the survey's been done in the past, I don't know if that data is collected anonymously. Sometimes people, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem putting things out there with my name attached to it, but some people, if their name's going to be attached to it, they're less willing to reply.
And with the See Click Fix app, you can send them in anonymously. That is an option.
Okay.
I think we need to get that more out there, too.
Mm-hmm.
I know we did it once, but maybe just as a reminder.
Okay.
I just have one more question on the survey. Did you, did you have an outline of the survey? Have you formulated the categories and the questions that you wanted to ask the public?
Not yet. It was, you know, approved at the last budget. So we didn't have, we have the one that was done in 2006 that would probably be a template if we were to do one. Yeah, but it's an entire process that we would engage council with if we were to go down that road.
I was going to suggest, I'd like to see it maybe at a work session, so we all had some input into it.
I can send out the 2006 one to council and take a look at, and then we could discuss.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Harbor Commission, Housing Commission, Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, Parks Commission, Peg Commission, Tree Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one of the nominees receives the majority of support. The following applications have been received. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one vacancy term ending 6/30/26. Applicants must be city residents or a person with interest in the property, in property in the city. Purpose: promote revitalization and environmentally distressed and functionally obsolete areas. Mailer appointment, I would like to appoint Roger Yoder to 225 Seventh Street to the term ending 6/30/26. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Downtown Development Authority, two vacancies, one at-large member term ending 6/30/27, and one interest member term ending 6/30/27. Purpose: Central Business District and Tax Incentive Financing Authority, city manager appointment.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to appoint for the at-large member, Lindsey Swodorski.
I will make a motion to support that. A second. Yes, please.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
And for the interest member, appreciate all of Tamara's work on the commission. Jody acted as a liaison with Little River. I'd like to appoint, to kind of keep that, I'd like to appoint Tyler Lepinon to fill that role going forward.
I'll make a motion to support. A second.
Who was the motion, I'm sorry?
Me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Housing Commission, one vacancy term ending five thirty-one twenty-eight. Purpose oversee senior low-income housing mail appointment. I would like to appoint Steve Bostick, fifty thirty-three Kenny Road for the term ending five thirty-one twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Heather, would you please take role?
I'm just gonna kind of pick one of them. There was, there were several. Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Parks Commission, four vacancies, three terms ending six thirty twenty-six and one term ending six thirty twenty-five. Three members can be non-residents but must own real estate or a business or a profession having a real, a licensed business location in the city and a child attending a school within, within the city. Purpose advisory on parks, development, maintenance, improvements and identifying, planning, implementing public and private beautification products. I would like to appoint Karen Mao, five thirty-six Fourth Street, to the term ending six thirty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Discussion. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. You want all these separate, right?
Yes, please.
Next, John Beach, four eighty-five Oxford Court for the term ending six thirty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, Karen Petola, two sixty-four First Avenue for the term ending six thirty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Last, Kelly Greavy, six oh six Broad Avenue for the term ending six thirty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. Consideration of a resolution authorizing claim for the Michigan, Protecting Michigan Pension Grant. The Protecting Michigan Pension Program was created to help Michigan underfunded municipal pension system under the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. The Michigan Department of Treasury was appropriated seven hundred and fifty million to establish a and operate a local unit municipal pension principal payment grant. The resolution authorizes but not require the city to apply for the grant. The city will continue to research the grant requirements and dialogue with the Treasury Department, Treasury prior to the grant application deadline of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. At this time, council adopt the resolution authorizing a claim for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Jeff McCula for the DPW.
Good evening. First, I'm happy to see that the appointments to the Parks Commission, it's a very active and creative group, so it's been a pleasure working with them. This is our annual report for the Department of Public Works. In Manistee, Public Works makes up all the utilities, our fleet, maintenance and operations, parks, refuse, streets and the city marina. The makeup of the different departments includes three non-union employees, myself, Rick Moore, the Deputy Director of Utilities, and our DPW clerk and marina manager. We've got full-time, twelve full-time employees in the street department, two full-time employees in the parks department, and then we add eleven seasonal employees. Those get split between parks and a little bit of the street work depending on what that we're doing. Eight in the utility departments, both in the water and sewer, and then five part-time employees that we hire during the summer to operate the marina. Administration, Katie Fields, hundreds and hundreds of phone calls each month for question, and citizens with inquiries, questions and so forth, and she does a very nice job getting out that information and passing it on to the other departments. Public Works manages or is involved in over seventeen of our municipal budgets through the year. We do a lot of interaction and reporting to M.DOT Eagle and other state and local agencies. Particularly Brandon Prince has been a very big part of the implementation of the See Click Fix, and he, Mickey and Bruce have done a very good job of responding to those and making sure that we're being responsive. We do a tremendous amount of purchasing and planning. We probably process over or between a hundred to a hundred and fifty different invoices each month through all those departments. Couple highlights, we received the DPW, or I should say the City of Manistee, along with the Spicer Group and Swodorsky Construction, received the Michigan American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award for structures between one and five million dollars for the Shoreline Erosion Project at the, at First Street Beach, so we're very proud of that. And then also DPW and particularly the Parks Department received the Outstanding Service Award from the MRA this year. We also work with all the various developments that are occurring in the city, whether it's just plan reviews or helping developers determine how to follow the city guidelines, extend utilities and so forth. Projects that we have been involved with this year, and we do a lot of, a lot of project management, you're familiar with these two, the first one, which is the rehabilit, excuse me, the rehabilitation of well nine, and we're currently in the process of repairing and rehabilitating well ten. Twelve street improvements that were completed by Manistee, Manistee High School. The first phase of the water main loop down at First Street Beach, we're still waiting for the directional bore contractor to finish the, the second phase of it, which would take it from the dog park location underneath the park up to Harbor Drive and create that loop. Last year, we finished improvements to both water towers. The industrial water tower had an exterior painting and some repairs completed to it, and the Maywood tank had an interior painting and repairs done to it. We're actually going through the warranty inspections on those right now, so we've got the Maywood tank drained. Tomorrow it will be inspected in, in the interior. A long-awaited project was the Quincy and Cleveland Street improvements, so that project is substantially complete. We're in the process of completing the punch list for that, and if you drive down it, I think it's a tremendous improvement. I hope the residents are happy with that. There was a lot of parking that used to happen off, off the edge of the road, so the contractor did all their restoration and seeding and then just put up some stakes to try to get the grass to establish, you know, before people start parking on there. We have been working closely with M.DOT on the Memorial Bridge Rehabilitation Project. In fact, the pre-construction meeting for that is gonna be held here in the council chambers this Thursday, so there was some information in the newspaper on that. I'll follow up with information on exactly what comes out of that meeting, but, and I got a, received an email from M.DOT that changed what they've been telling me for the past month, but beginning a week from today, or a week from today, construction is expected to begin. During that first month, there will be traffic that is allowed to cross the bridge, and then they had been telling me July seventeenth many, many times. I got a notification today that says, I think, the twelfth, that they're gonna start a little bit early, but that's when the full detour will be implemented. That first phase, they'll be replacing the bridge deck, which is why they have to keep all traffic off of it, but it'll still operate to vessel traffic. When that's completed this fall, there may be a short gap where, where work does not occur, but then again in December, then they plan on putting a tent around the entire bridge, sand blasting it, painting it and completing the project. So there will be a full detour this winter as well. We've, we've completed the construction of the disc golf course. The only items that are remaining are benches that we're still waiting to be delivered, so we're hoping those come any time. With the Parks Commission, we held a ribbon cutting ceremony. The Parks Commission gave out over a hundred of the discs that have the Manistee logo on them to the kids that, that attended. It was a really cool event to see everybody and families and grandparents with their kids out playing and very rewarding project. And the local disc club, disc golf club is already talking about where can we build the next one and so, pretty exciting. This past year, we completed a major milestone, I think, in Manistee's history, and it ended with the, the Phase Two Rural Development Projects AMB, which was the conveyance to the treatment plant from the last overflow in Manistee that has been eliminated, and then the upgrades to the Clean Water Recovery Plant. And a couple of weeks ago, we had the ribbon cutting for that as well. We're currently working with the engineering team on the Riverwalk improvements that is being funded by the DDA and a EDA grant, so we're hoping to see some of that work start yet this year. The majority of it probably will occur in the spring. We completed Memorial Drive improvements, which everybody knows was a huge need for the community. We were able to, I think we just got payment for the M.DOT match on that. So M.DOT provided a hundred thousand dollar match to that. We were able to get that done ahead of the bridge project so that it can be used for the, the detour. We have over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of playground equipment ordered. It's slowly coming in, so as those pieces are coming in, we're getting them installed and waiting for the large pieces of playground structures, and then we'll be working with the Parks Commission to do a community build and get those implemented. We completed the construction of the Ice Rink Storage Building that was donated by, by Mr. Grabowski's family, and then some key projects that we've spent, well, particularly the Hampton Inn Project, spent a tremendous amount of time working through the, the associated public improvements around that, working with the, the construction superintendent to make sure that their trash and their impact on the park is minimized. We're having dialogue on a weekly basis about when they need to start getting out of that parking lot in perpetuity so that we can hold the Forest Festival and we can get it cleaned up and, and be able to use it for the community. We've been working with Manistee Area Public Schools on particularly the Kennedy School construction and how that impacts the surrounding infrastructure, sidewalks, streets, and we've got one of the street projects, Sixth Street, that's in our Transportation Improvement Plan. And then the Gateway Project, we've been tracking that and kind of anticipating and working with that group as, as things come forward. In the street department, some of our primary duties in this, I could make a list that's, would take up this whole presentation, but winter maintenance is one of our largest responsibilities, and then road maintenance during the summer. Sidewalk improvements, managing parking lots and trying to find some financing to upgrade a lot of the needs we have in the parking lots. Our forestry work, which is tree cutting, tree trimming, brush pickup and working with the Tree Commission, our US thirty-one contract with the State of Michigan to maintain US thirty-one in the city limits, but then three of our, our street department employees operate the bridge and is reimbursed by the State of Michigan, and then another three of our employees operate Maple Street Bridge. So six months out of the year, that twelve-person department has six people that are just on the bridges. Some of our highlights, again Memorial Drive, Quincy Street, our sidewalk program, we've, with council's help, we've invested additional monies into there. We're trying to push that further through the city and get it done with more benefit. We've completed, as I mentioned, Twelfth Street. I think I forgot to mention First Street Beach Loop, which I hope you've all been down and enjoyed that. Personally, I went down and watched the tail end of the concert Saturday, and it was really cool to see everybody parking in those spaces, utilizing it, and to see the traffic flowing through it, so we're proud of that. Crack ceiling, we have, we did not complete that last year, but we are planning to do it now. Actually, the machine was supposed to be here yesterday, but it had some mechanical issues, so we're hoping that the machine gets delivered in the next week or two, and we'll begin that and finish it this spring. And then every two years, we stripe the major streets, so that's, that's lined up to be done before the Fourth of July, so all the major streets will be striped, and then we're also, literally any day now, we're gonna start striping the crosswalks and parking spaces and that sort of thing. And here's just a couple pictures of the, two of the new streets. I'd like to bring this up every year because, because our staff is very proud of the, the winter maintenance aspect and how we've done things at low-cost investment for major, major returns, and in fact, we were, there were several of us at a APWA conference in Traverse City last week, or the week before, two weeks ago, and we were talking with different vendors and different communities on how they deal with their chemical treatment, salt applications and so forth, and we feel pretty confident that we've close to optimized our program and, and we save, that, that dollar amount keeps going up. It's fifty-five thousand at a minimum every year, and those dollars get put right back into the next road reconstruction project. Fleet maintenance, probably a lot of people don't think about that so much, but there's over sixty-five vehicles and pieces of equipment throughout the city's fleet that we've got one full-time person and half of another full-time person that are really responsible for all the preventive maintenance, all the response when things go, when things break down and go bad. And it's, it's been a real challenge since COVID to get our replacement equipment, and so we've had to, you know, keep those, keep those, keep them longer than, than what we anticipated. And what we've been able to do is our preventative maintenance, Jeremy's doing a tremendous, tremendously good job with that, so we've actually been able to increase our preventative maintenance budget, but then offset that by our full repair, and, and we're prolonging a lot of those vehicles longer than we normally would have. And it's allowed us to, to actually put more into our motor pool from the public works. Oops, I went backwards. Because we're starting to purchase equipment, and I brought a lot of stuff to you recently, we're starting to be able to get the equipment, so we're, we're able to get some pricing on it, we're able to get some deliveries of those. The police department is dealing with the same thing, but now we're starting to accumulate some of the older vehicles that we've taken out of service, so we'll likely do an auction in the next fiscal year, and again, the proceeds from that auction go right back into the motor pool and, and support future purchases. One thing that we're pretty proud of, Tanner Liston, our welder, welder fabricator, and he's kind of our assistant mechanic, but the picture on the right is the signature disc golf hole, and we made it, he made a replica out of steel of the Fifth Avenue Beach Lighthouse, and that's been very well received by people playing that. And then the city manager showed me a picture of a cool fire pit that he's, had seen. I took it to Tanner and said, let's come up with something on our own and let's build this thing. We currently have it sitting down at the Lions Pavilion, and it's open for the public to use and enjoy the sunset or a fire. We thought that was kind of an intimate setting. We plan on building at least another one and maybe more depending what the community reaction is, and be able to have it downtown for like Sleigh Bell. I'd love to put, put one at the ice skating rink so that it's kind of a warming thing, or we could put it other places that the community felt would be appropriate. Parks Department, I won't get too far into the weeds on this because they do a separate report, but there's eight, over eighteen different properties that we maintain with mowing and repairs, upgrades. There's nine public restroom facilities that through the summer get, get cleaned every day, and we're responsible for upkeep. Certainly the ice skating rink I mentioned, beach cleaning, which is, excuse me, more than just, just grooming the beach itself, but every time the wind blows, there's sand everywhere, and it takes a lot of effort to keep those areas clean. Volunteer support, which I've been doing a lot of projects within the park system, and then a lot of work just supporting the DDA initiatives with banners, the sidewalk markings like for the social district, the planer baskets and flowers and, and things that they need. And then this year, we, we did a full replacement of the soil for Blossom Boulevard, and it was kind of neat to see the article on how people appreciate that, so, and that's all volunteer-supported. This winter, we usually, when in between snow events, we try to, to do some sort of maintenance item. Last year, we did all of the benches, the, all of the memorial benches. This year, the guys pulled in every picnic table in the park system, sanded them down, fixed all the hardware, replaced the wood where necessary, restained them all and got them back out in the parks in early May. So if you, if you go out there and see, there's a lot of consistency with how they look now. Just another cool thing, we received a donation for a handicap beach chair last year, and we're hoping, they had promised that if it worked out well for us, that they would put one at First Street as well, so we're hoping they follow through with that. Speaking with the, the concessioners, that gets used a lot, and people are very appreciative. And then last week, we installed two new basketball hoops at First Street Beach, which was part of the funds from the Mingar Grant and part of the money that council approved for park improvements. And I don't, the, there were kids with basketballs waiting as the guys were tightening the, the bolts on them, so I haven't driven by yet and haven't seen people playing on them, so those are the type of improvements that we're trying to do. For some reason, the nets that came with aren't working, so we're trying to come up with a appropriate system to keep the nets on them. And then another pretty neat thing, Jamie Catlett donated sunscreen dispensers for each of the beaches. She did one last year, she did one this year, but we've had a lot of people in the community, like Tim O'Connor from the Parks Commission, he donated defibrillator, so we're trying to work and support those. The picture on the left, it's a little bit hard to see, but that's the new trash receptacle that was selected and, and approved by council last year's budget, and then we also have an allocation in the upcoming budget. So we were able to purchase seventeen of those. Fourteen were from the money that council budgeted, three of them were for two different grant requests. So Morton Park will have the new ones, the disc golf will have two new ones, and then we've chose to put the fourteen that we were able to purchase in the two beaches first, and then we'll work them as we make, buy more, work them out throughout the rest of the parks. It's a huge improvement over the fifty-five gallon drums. The only issue is those are thirty-gallon, so we're gonna have to supplement a little bit more as we go along. As you're aware, we, we kind of ran out of places to put the memorial benches, so actually, I think Kelly Greavy from the Parks Commission came up with the concept of Adirondack Chairs. So last year, we implemented that, and I think we got four or five out there. I think there's eight out there now or in the process, and we've got some ordered. It seems to be very receptive, and I've seen people posting, sitting in those chairs and recognizing the loved one that, that they purchased it for, so I think that's pretty cool. Refuse. As you're aware, we contract out the, the weekly collection through Republic Services. We do maintain metal and plastics combingled recycling in a partnership with MCC. We updated that agreement with MCC earlier this year because they're planning to utilize a grant and rebuild that facility and locate it where it should be easier to maintain and for the public to get to, so that's worked out as a very good partnership. We're doing yard waste collection on a weekly basis, and we make compost out of that and put that right back into the park system and make it available for residents to use. We're actually running really low on it right now, and we need to do this year's run. When we do this year's run of compost, it'll be the last year that we use those plastic yard waste bags that we used to have, and then, so now we're in year three where we've composted all the paper bags that we've had, and we feel that that's gonna be a much better product when we're done. And then, of course, we've got the monthly bulk item pickup that seems to be well, well-used throughout the community. And then the last item, Republic works with the city each year, and instead of doing the household hazardous waste that the county already does, we allow the county to do that program because we had very little participation, and then we come up with a recycling program that's specific to city residents in a specific item. So in the past, we've done, we've done paper, we've done tires, we've done electronics, there's one I'm missing. This year, we're gonna do scrap metal. So if any, anybody has any type of metal, scrap metal, anything in their yard or house that you want to get rid of, we'll have staff down there, you can drop it off. Any of the proceeds that come back out of that will go right back into the refuse fund in support, keeping the rates lower. And that's obviously June twenty-fourth from eight to twelve at the Yarmore Parking Lot. And then on the left is a couple of weeks of just bag pickups from the local brush pick, or the yard waste, and then on the right is a picture of finished compost once we screen it and, and actually let it cook for three years. Utilities, I won't go into real in-depth on that because we do a separate report to council, but in two thousand twenty-two, we pumped two hundred and ninety million gallons of water throughout the year. It's starting to get close to a million gallons a day. In two thousand twenty-two, we treated four hundred and five, or four hundred and four million gallons of sewage. So the difference is you're pumping water, but a lot of that water is irrigation, so it's not going to the treatment plant, which actually makes that a little bit further apart, but the rest of the four hundred and four million gallons is groundwater and infiltration and illicit sources that are still getting into our sewer system that are not from normal household and industrial use. I will, just an update on that, Rick Moore, who is our lead operator at the treatment plant, is retiring this fall, so anticipation of that, we internally posted in our promoting, Bruce Banks, who runs the water department right now as the lead man, he will be transferring to the wastewater treatment plant. He's got his first level of license, and it'll take a couple of years, probably two to three years, for him to get the, the minimum licensing we need to run. to three years, for him to get the, the minimum licensing we need to run that plant. But we think that he's got the right knowledge, the right talent, he's got interest, and so we think that's a good internal move. And then we'll simply need a contract with somebody that has a Class B license to be able to sign our reports and stuff. And then internally, right now, I've got the water department lead person posted. We've got one internal candidate that already has the proper licensing, actually exceeds it and is interested, so. That with the new Parks Department person, we're gonna have some bouncing around of employees this year. And on the lower left is, I wish, I wish people could really appreciate all the work that, when you go down to that head, new headworks, how much you, is underground and forty-five feet deep that you probably will never see, but tremendous amount of construction. And the picture on the right is some of the new wet weather piping. And then these pictures don't, really don't do it justice, but those pipes are four foot in diameter. It's a massive pipeline, and it was a massive undertaking to, to eliminate that last overflow. Last topic would be the marina. The Harbor Commission has had a desire to build that marina for years and years and years, and through lack of funding, really the only way we were able to solve that is to budget the material cost to build that patio, and then the Public Works employees just built it in-house. And that's what we're doing with our playground grants, that's what we're doing a lot of things, is trying to pledge our own staff time as in-kind services so that we can get money to do those other.
I jumped in there, just, you may remember recall that, when we built that building, we anticipated patio there, and that middle window was designed to be removed and put it instead of patio doors.
I did not remember that.
To do that, that was built into that design of that building, so if somewhere down the road you wanted to make that accessible for the building, that would be, that's set up previously for that.
I forgot about that, I appreciate that, yeah. So, and with the work that Kelly Greby has been working on, the DDA funded the patio sets that's there, it's absolutely beautiful. And there's been a lot of other improvements in the, in the marina grounds, we've trimmed a lot of trees, the volunteers have done a lot of painting, a lot of uptick, so the facilities are really looking very nice. And now the next phase is some painting to happen inside the motors lounge, and then there'll be new furnishings and a whole new look in there, and so things are starting to, to really improve at the marina. And it's a little bit early in the year to say, but we do have a couple more seasonals than what we've had in the past several years. So this week, we'll, we'll be at eight, which is really good. And then it's just the warm weather, I honestly, I believe, has got people out boating already, and we're starting to see more traffic in June than what is normal. Normally, you don't see hardly anything until after the Fourth of July.
Jeff, what was the bathrooms coming down there?
The upper bathrooms have been fully cleaned, repainted. We just met with Kelly yesterday, they're, she's working with Katie to get some mirrors and some decorative sconces ordered. And then Larry was gonna do the doors this week. I know he was out, but our goal is to get the doors to the public restroom painted up this week and finished out.
Did they do some, they fixed that because it's been rubbing hard to open it?
I know he's, I know that Larry's been working with Mark Hanson, there's some parts that Mark has been working on too, so, yeah. With that, I would take any questions you have.
I have two points I'd like to make. One is I, I am very happy that you have succession plan internally for the wastewater and water, thank you very much for that. And number two, a while back you and I talked about a possibility of having a place where citizens could dump rubbish, branches and stuff. You thought you might have a spot there, have you given any more thought to that, if you please?
We, we had done that when we had the recycling center over in the industrial park. One of the locations I had contemplated was the Athen Vine, where we own the property between, on the west side of the railroad tracks, but it wasn't needed as part of the plant expansion. So that, that was one site, and then also, we were considering the cold storage area that we've got in the industrial park. I think that one's a little too busy because we let contractors utilize that, so there's a lot of in and out, but.
I'd just like if you could keep it in your head and consider it, and if you find a spot, I know a lot of students would use it, as we have in the past.
The other thing that, that we could do is, at MCC, we actually have a bin for, that you can get topsoil from. So, you know, I could have discussions with them, that would probably be even more convenient once that new facility is built, to try to incorporate something like that, so I'll follow up on that.
Then you're, keep it in your.
Yeah.
Backpack, please. Thank you, other than that, thank you very much.
Okay, Jeff, you brought up about that dirt. Do you do anything, put any kind of killer on that to get rid of those weeds? Because I see on Cypress, weeds are ironing the flowers. We're working on it.
So, our facility is regulated by Eagle, and they do inspections of our, of our composting facility, and we had conversations about that, and we actually did some soil analysis. And what we found out is, you've gotta have the right ratio of carbon matter, dead leaves, and green matter, which is, you know, grass. And we have way too many leaves for the amount of grass that we put together. And so we've got a very carbon-rich compost, which means that the bacteria that breaks that down and does the composting action doesn't get it hot enough to kill the weed seeds that are in the, in the compost. That's why it grows weeds well.
Preen on or something like that?
They actually, Blossom Boulevard did put preen on it.
Good.
Which is supposed to be pre-emergent, they all emerged, so.
You're talking about the benches, the chairs. A lot of people are asking me about benches, and I know you like the chairs, but they, they wanna know what is open for benches.
Currently, we have no identified places to put another bench. One of the possibilities, and we, we've got a plan for it for one right now, is when Fifth Avenue parking lot, the beach parking lot is repaved and that, that wall is built, I think we could put benches on the, on the lake side of that wall and line that. So there may be an opportunity for half a dozen there. But we've, the benches started out on the Riverwalk, then through downtown, then we've kind of tucked them into the beaches.
Skate park, tennis court, just for thoughts?
If, yeah, possible.
Just so people know, because they keep asking me, so. Also, when you get these bulk items, I mean, some of this stuff is put out weeks in advance, and it sits there, davenport's and mattresses. I don't know, is there any way we can arrange to have something in the paper? Keep your junk in the backyard till, till first of the month. I mean, it's, I mean, you're coming up with holidays and people are looking at all this junk.
I'm gonna write that down.
Well, it always falls on the first, like, it's always a holiday weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the first, first hall of the month.
Maybe we can change that?
We could post the, how that program works again on Facebook and stuff.
You get people moving in and out, they don't know the problem.
Yeah.
Well, they leave it, yeah, they don't put it out, they don't pay anything.
Yeah.
It's got nothing to do with the pickup, they're just trash.
Yeah, and if the timing doesn't work, then they head to the beaches and use the dumpsters.
They don't care.
I, I got three quick questions. What are you doing with the extra trash cans?
The extra trash cans?
Like the ones that you're phasing out?
The barrels?
Yes.
Hmm, I don't have an answer on that. I think they're just bringing them back right now.
Because I think Casman might be able to use some of them.
Oh, okay.
They don't have any, any trash receptacles anywhere.
I think that'd be appropriate to, to disposition them to another public entity.
I can't think of anything else off the top of my head that needs them, but, and then is there a plan to paint the, the lines on the basketball courts, I don't know what they're called?
Yes. So internally, we had a discussion about doing that, and then we had a meeting with Kelly yesterday, and she wanted to power wash them, so I think we'll probably get those power washed and then, then restripe it. We've got the templates for it and everything.
Okay, and then is there a plan yet for the courts at Sands Park?
The, oh, the tennis court?
Yes.
So the current plan is to demo, and we put money in the upcoming fiscal year budget to demo those. Manistee Area Public Schools has pledged to partner fifty-fifty with us on that, and then also to extend a sidewalk from Seventh Street to Sixth Street along that side of the roadway.
Is there like a timeframe to start demoing that?
We just had a conversation this morning at our staff meeting with the engineers that, that, because the money's, obviously, the budget starts July first, so after July first, that, we want to get that moving along.
What are we putting in there?
Currently, it'll just be topsoiled.
Okay. I went out last Saturday to Parkdale, they have, a lot of people are playing pickleball, and I brought this up before, and they worked on grants, they worked on getting money, and they need a good place where they could have put in ten courts, and then they could have different tournaments and all this stuff. They had a lot of people out there, and I mean, you're missing a big opportunity, I think, and I grabbed all these papers from Travers, them all over the place, that talks about how much investment comes in if you put a pickleball. And you can put it for tennis, too, I mean, put the stripes in.
Yeah, the cost, so what, what Manistee Township did was take two courts and convert those into, I think, six pickleball courts. So that's, I mean, that's what we have, so conceivably, the four courts we have there now, the same footprint could put twelve pickleball courts. But the cost to build those is the same as the cost to build the tennis courts, still talking about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, they said they worked at it, they got grants, and they, other work. I think we're missing an opportunity, I, I just, to put in volleyball and all this other, I mean, it's good for people who like to play it, but lollipop could go to the beach, and, and tennis, people like playing tennis. But I think you're missing an opportunity on, on putting it in the pickleball courts.
Yeah, so currently, funding is to remove them, to remove the unsafe hazard that's there. And then I've had conversations with the Parks Commission, and we've talked about it at the council level, what's the right thing to put back in there someday? And we've talked about it at the Sands Park Control Board.
Yep, because, you know, I mean, everybody's writing about them, everybody's building them, I mean, by the way Township's talking about it now, and I think we need to get going on it.
I have two real quick things.
Okay.
You mentioned the trash cans, which during the beach loop, I mean, you see them out, they're, they're very nice, and I know that they were a lot more expensive than everybody anticipated. I do have a question about it, and it, I don't want it to come off as a criticism because that's not how I mean it, but at the fish cleaning station, it looks like we put some new trash cans there. And I'm just wondering if that's like the best placement, because as you mentioned, they're not as big, and I don't know, I don't fish, but it seems like that's gonna fill pretty quickly. And, I mean, I don't know if that's the best use for like a thousand dollar trash can versus one of our old ones that could just be painted, given that people are throwing waste products in there. I, I don't know, it's just a question I had, is, is like, could those trash cans go somewhere else where it might make more sense?
Sure.
I, I don't know. And then you mentioned going around and repainting some of the lines on streets. At that point in time, will we also maybe be assessing some of these streets? I'm just wondering, because like, I know we've talked about like by the post office, now that, you know, Port City Bruiser, I mean, if you park like in front of Dollar General to go to get out, I mean, somebody, I'm, I'm sure somebody is tripped. I, I mean, that is like, you're putting your foot in a pothole that has not been fixed. And I know we've got some areas, I watched somebody on Second Street the other day pull up to park, and I don't know what the term would be for it, but like, the curb is rising higher.
I've seen it.
And they took the whole one side of their front bumper off and doing that, because when you're driving, you can't see that. So I don't know if we need to indicate that somehow to somebody, but it just seems like some of that is not, I don't know that it's not being recognized, because I don't want to assume that, it's just like, some of that needs to be addressed.
So Second Street, I actually saw that a couple of weeks ago.
Uh-huh.
And what I, what I think has happened is, there's clay underneath that curb.
Yeah.
And the garbage trucks or buses or whatever, but heavy loading, plow trucks probably too, has pushed that down, displaced the clay up, and the curb is blown up, so.
Well, when I.
That's actually on our list of repairs to do.
Because when I saw it, I said something to the homeowner, it was outside, and I was like, is this new? And he's like, I've called for three years. And he said they've been out and assessed, but we never get anywhere. So I, I'm just wondering if there's other instances like that, because if I was parking my car somewhere and I took off the front bumper because of something like that, I, I'd be pretty upset. I mean, because when you're driving, you don't see, it's not like you hit something intentionally. So.
Okay.
Where's that at, Jeff?
Um, like, so it's the same side, I think, as Little Caesar's, but it's like in that block between Little Caesar's and Walnut, that's, like, I think it's right out in front of a little gray house.
Yes, center of the block.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't notice it, like, and, you know what I mean?
If there's a car parked there, you won't notice it, but I walked by and was like, holy cow.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, when you look at it, there's quite a gap.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay. It might just be, we're out doing stripes, that might be a good time to kind of assess some of that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have an update on the Gateway Project T, Eptoxiatis.
What, what use for it?
You're gonna use that? The down arrow will put you through, this is the pointer.
Great.
But I gotta get in there and find your.
Good evening, PF Taxiatis, Little River Holdings. The last time I was here back in January was when we were reevaluating the Gateway Project, which started a number of years ago. And what you have in this slide is what was approved last September by the city to have a chain type of hotel on the north side and a parking lot. For reasons that I discussed with you in January, we felt that we needed to reevaluate the project, reinvent it. Therefore, we put everything on hold, and we have been moving with a concept plan.
Down arrow.
The down arrow goes up?
Cross.
Oh, okay. Can I do one slide at a time? It goes.
You want right there? Because it's.
Maybe I can, can I tell you when to move it?
You can tell me, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll just use the arrow.
Is this what you're looking for right here?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have three renderings of the plans for the Gateway Complex, which will consist of a condominium hotel, restaurant, and other amenities on the north side of River Street. And on the south side will be four groups of buildings on the east end, in the corner of River Street and US Thirty-One, will be a four-story mixed-use building that will include commercial, residential, and office space, commercial being retail, residential apartments, and offices on the fourth floor. On the south, on the west end, in the corner of River Street and Division, again, will be four stories of residential apartments with a small retail space right in the corner on the first floor, which I'll show you later, in the corner of Division and River Street. Along River Street will be eight townhouses, that will be work-live units, two stories high. And then behind the buildings and above the townhouses will be parking. It will be a parking deck, which will have two entrances, one from River Street and one from Division Street. There is another view, now we're looking towards the west with the condominium hotel on the right, the commer, the mixed-use building first, behind it is the parking structure, and what you see on top of the upper level of the parking structure is going to be covered with solar panels. A third view, can we go down? Thank you. Again, the same complex, now looking south from above the bridge with a condo hotel and the buildings, the mixed-use buildings on the south. with the condo hotel and the buildings, the mixed-use buildings on the south. Looking at it from an aerial view, you see the condo hotel, the mixed-use building on the right, east, the residential building on the west, with the parking deck in the middle. However, under the parking structure along River Street will be the townhouses. Can you help me? Ah, great, thank you. So, let's then look at the north side, the condominium hotel. You're looking at the first floor, that will be River Street level. It will be second floor, looking from the Riverwalk. As we come in, in the entrance, we have a large entrance to provide connectivity. Oops. Didn't mean to do that, there. Connectivity between River Street and the Riverwalk through a number of two levels of decks. And then on the east side will be an ADA approach from River Street into the Riverwalk. Again, we're trying to promote the use of the Riverwalk from people along River Street. As we come in, in the lobby, on the left side will be the hotel operation. So the concept here is that the ninety condominium units are going to be individually owned. Little River Holdings will maintain probably most of them. And then the owners will have the option, if not the requirement, to have those, their units in the hotel operation, at least for part of the year. The reason for the ninety units, therefore the height, is because that's what's required in order to run a successful hotel operation. On the right side, right here, will be a restaurant with breakfast, lunch, and dinner, with indoor/outdoor seating. And then in the, in the corner with frontage on River Street and US 31 will be, at this point, we call it a heritage venue, but it will be a space that will be developed to showcase the history of Menste and the Tribe. And this is, would be kind of an interactive type of operation. Again, we're trying to make this a destination location. At the lower level, which on the south side will be essentially a basement, but on the north side, it will exit out to Riverwalk. We have a conference event space, hundred fifty people, for up to hundred fifty people, with kitchen and related functions for this space. And then in the back will be support services for the hotel operation above. And then on the left will be the amenities, including a pool, fitness center, a small spa, which will be available for both the owners and guests of the condominium hotel, but also available to the tenants of the apartments on the south side of River Street. And eventually, maybe will be open to others. At this point, we don't have plans for that. The second, third, and fourth levels of this building will be condominiums. There will be mixed use, there will be one-bedroom units and efficiencies, so that property, prospective buyers can buy one unit or two adjacent units. And then for the hotel operation, in order to have maximum flexibility, the, the operation can rent out as many rooms, adjacent rooms, as anybody needs. So that will be second, third, and fourth levels. And then on the upper level, we have... On the west side, we have, again, some condominiums. And then on the east side will be a rooftop bar with limited menu. And this operation will be associated with the restaurant on the first floor, with indoor and outdoor seating. And the views from here would be spectacular. Actually, from fourth and fifth levels of this building, people will be able to see Lake Michigan. And then on the south side will be an open area, again, available for events, weddings, and so on. Then, now moving to the south side, aerial view, on the right will be the mixed-use building with first store, first level being retail. On the west side will be apartments. And this corner space will be also retail. And then along River Street will be the townhouses, which will be larger on the first level, River Street level. And then will be half of that space on the second level, so it will be like loft-type of apartments. Then there will be an area, a parking area here, I believe it's about twenty-seven parking spaces, with entrance from River Street, which will end about here. And then the main parking deck will enter from Division Street. And it will go so that the main portion of the parking deck will be kind of hidden behind the buildings, behind the residential buildings. So it will go up and turn, and then on the next level... Can you move it down just a touch, please? There. Now you see the, the parking continues and will go up another two levels. Then the east and west buildings will be apartments. So second and third floors of both the east and west buildings will be apartments for rent. And that, one thing to notice is that elevators and staircases will serve both the apartment buildings and the parking structure. And then we continue again to the third level. And then on the fourth level, we end up with open parking, which however, will be covered with solar panels, because we're going to need the electricity primarily for the condo hotel, especially in the summer, where we have high electricity needs. For that matter, any, any available spaces in all of the buildings, any space on the roofs that is not taken by mechanical equipment, also will have solar panels. So then that will be the fourth level, again, apartments. And then on the east building, and you notice that it will be a balcony here. Again, we're trying to get the fourth level of that building kind of indent or inset because of the size, so that as we come down from US 31, it doesn't look as massive. And that will be offices for Little River Holdings that intends to consolidate the operations that currently are in other areas, bring them here. So then the next series of slides show what the buildings will look like. And now we're looking north with the mixed-use building on the left. There is the inset fourth floor with the condo hotel in the back. Help Heather.
Which you went there?
No, up.
At Oak Barn?
There. Now looking west on River Street is the mixed-use building with the townhouses and the parking over it. It's okay, we can, I see what's happening here, I keep pushing the wrong button.
Yeah, it's okay.
So, and then those are some renderings of the facade of, facade of the buildings. And these are the facades for the condo hotel. And what you see here is the direction to the architects was to have colors and type of architecture that one is sympathetic to the historic district or to the rest of the downtown. This property is not in the historic district, it's outside. But we want it to be sympathetic, but also have architectural elements and colors that represent the native emphasis on the sky. And that's in the form of glass that reflects the sky. And water in the form of these architectural details, like waves. And then natural earth colors. It will be a lot of brick, wood, rock, and in general, earth colors. I know I'm going a little fast, but this is the entrance to the condo hotel that is River Street that will open and connect River Street to the Riverwalk through a series of decks on this side of the building. A lot of wood. Some of the facades of the condo hotel building will have full balconies. Some will be, what's the name? Juliret, Juliette, I think, how do you call those?
No, that's all balconies.
An engineer needs to help me.
Juliette.
Juliette, thank you, yeah. So those would be like zero clearance balconies. Thanks, Katie. By the way, we have, this plan you're seeing tonight is, actually reflects some changes that we made the last couple of days, based on discussions, informal discussions with the city planners and a number of other individuals. So that we're trying to incorporate as many of the ideas and needs of the community, as well as make it financially feasible. So, the, the upper three slides show the, the relation of the condo hotel to River Street. Again, we're trying to enhance connectivity between the downtown and Riverwalk. And then same thing here, and then you can better see the Riverwalk right here. The elevation difference is about five to seven feet. And again, another view. Then, I need to go up just a touch.
You want to what?
A little up.
Go up?
There you go, yes. Now we are looking at the south side of the development with, this is, we're looking from, this is Division Street. This is the entrance to the main parking deck with the apartment building. Here, this is the corner of, let me, well, I'll do it like that. The corner of Division and River Street, down here will be the small retail space. And you can see the entrance to the parking deck from Division Street going in and behind the buildings. And finally, a few more views of, of the south complex with the townhouses. So there will be only one level of parking that will be visible from River Street. So this is the plan. We've been working on this for several months now, we feel very comfortable with that. We have so far received positive feedback from a number of parties. We are in the process of preparing the application for a planned unit development, because the condo hotel building is five stories, and by rights, we're only allowed four stories. The parking, at this point, we have two hundred and ninety parking spaces. By code, we need hundred and forty. Reality is that we're going to need more parking. And therefore, we are putting in more parking than we need. However, the DDA is interested in participating in the construction of the parking deck with seventy-five to eighty-five parking spaces. And we'll figure out, we're in the process of actually start talking about the logistics of how to have this partnership. I'm open to questions.
When do we start the project?
When all of the checkbooks open. Back in January, I believe I told you that I estimate that to be two years before we start. Based on a schedule that we have now, and initial discussions with the city because of the brownfield plan with MEDC, because of the redevelopment grant primarily for the condominium hotel. Also, based on discussions with the banks and equity partners. If everything goes smoothly, we're looking at a year from now. So a bit faster than I anticipated some time ago.
Anybody else?
I think it's, it's wonderful, it's beautiful. I think it'd be stunning. It's a lot for me to absorb. I'm sure with everybody else that are on the audience, it's a lot to absorb. I'd probably have to listen to the tape and watch the presentation about five times before I got everything that I wanted out of it, so.
And that will be available to answer any questions, clarifications. You're absolutely right, there is a lot. We tried to incorporate a lot of the ideas and a lot of the previous studies that were done for River Street. And so we have put our collective thoughts and ideas and needs of the community that we have been discussing for the last ten, twelve years in this.
We're gonna need a bigger fire truck, Chuck.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna need a bigger fire truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need to keep that agenda because.
Hall ladder.
Two.
Yeah.
We're gonna need better firefighting capability for this company.
But what are we gonna do? Leave the land as grass then and then put food carts?
Pardon?
We're gonna leave that as, you planted seed for the grass?
Well, yes. Back in January, when I talked with you, there was interest in doing something to beautify that area. Same thing, the Brownfield Authority expressed the same interest and the planning commission. So we had, we removed the material that was there that was contaminated. We had local contractors, Wiedorski, do that. They replaced that with clean soil. And then they seeded the area. On the south side, they seeded. On the north side, they hydroseeded. It was way too expensive to hydroseed the whole area. Already we're over $35,000 for just this summer. Because by next year, we're going to have to tear everything up. The weather has not cooperated, as you know. It has been very dry. And therefore, we just authorized the contractor to start watering. We're working with the city on getting access to water. As soon as the grass is established, we're going to remove the fences. We're going to have a row of fences along the south side of the property, you know, where the hill goes up. And we have ordered a number of banners so that we create kind of a barrier, visual barrier, where the retaining wall by the former dry cleaners is. The braces, we can remove the upper braces. They're done, they are not needed. And then we're going to leave the lower set of braces that will be kind of camouflaged by the fence and the banners. On the south side, we do not plan to have any uses. Again, under the grass, under the topsoil, there is contaminated soils. And we don't particularly want people to go there and start digging and eating the dirt. On the north side, where, because most of the north side is paved, we are talking with food truck operators to bring their equipment there and have benches and tables and so on, at least for this summer. By next summer, everything will be under construction.
Anybody else?
Thank you for adding the solar panels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have an update on the City of Manistee Housing Mission Abilitation Project. Jonathan Nussberg.
Bill asked me to, Bill asked me to come by and provide an update on the project, the Century Terrace Harbor View construction kind of status. High level. So we are, we finished nearly all interior work at this point. There's some punch list items in Century Terrace kind of common areas that we're finishing up. We're currently finishing up the site work. Some of that got delayed due to winter conditions, obviously. And we're not going to do concrete and parking lot work in the winter. So those are under work, are underway. And those are, will be complete, site works anticipated to be complete by the end of June, probably say mid-July to be safe. And then the other kind of item we've been waiting on, there was some electrical delays with supply chain delays that caused generators and kind of electrical switchgear to be delayed. But those have come in. We're still waiting on a generator for Century Terrace. So all work will be complete by the, let's say, end of July, early August is what we're anticipating here. Currently, we're leasing up and we only have 11 vacant units at this point. And my understanding is that we have applicants for those units as well. So I think by the end of June, we anticipate to be fully occupied. So, yeah, we're very happy with, you know, how much interest there's been for the units and that we were able to fill them so quickly. But happy to, you know, answer any questions. Just brief update there, but.
Do all of the apartments now have heat?
Yes. Yep.
And I've heard that there's been some complaints about hot water. I'm assuming that they all have hot water running now?
Yes. If, yeah, might. I haven't heard any of those complaints, but if there was something, it's obviously an active construction site. There were shut offs. We give residents notices if they had to shut off hot water for an hour or two. But I haven't heard any complaints from that.
Each apartment have a hot water heater? Is that a central?
Central. Yep, there's a central boiler in each building.
You really gutted a lot of this plan by actioning out a lot of things. There's a lot of stuff that was originally under design to be replaced. Now it's like as needed or crossed out.
Yeah, some was. So this, we provided, when we first were contemplating the project, we provided the original scope of work. Obviously, we got awarded tax credits. We went through, COVID happened at the time, and then you bid it out. So some was taken off for either we couldn't fit within the budget or just simply exploratory work that was done through the process, through the kind of capital needs assessments that are completed and determined that, you know, certain things weren't needed to be replaced.
How are you doing the new entrance if there's no FAB system? Have I got a key pick?
I believe it's still a key entry.
Or there are gonna be the issue with duplicates. Maybe there's always been an issue with there's keys, people duplicate them.
Yeah, I would have to check with management on that, but.
I see it's act out, it's a little FAB, so I'm just curious.
I'm just curious, because in the handout we got in 2022, it says you spent $68,000 per individual unit. And I know that you take what you spent and divide it. But I would like to know what you actually, like I've asked twice for this, what you've actually spent in the units? Because I feel like these before and after pictures that we got in 2021, I think it was, like, they're cheaply done. Like, some people had like a bathroom vanity, and then they went to a standing sink, like they lost space. And so I would just like to know what you spent on individual units? Because I see on some of this, like, you took away ceiling fans in the living room and bedrooms, outlets for over-the-range microwaves. Like, it seems like a lot of stuff for the individual units. Hook up, new washer and dryer. I don't know if that's, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah. Again, I defer to, you know, the architects, engineers, their expertise, general contractors for a lot of the items that were taken out. And we're, we have a fixed budget. Obviously, there's only a certain pool of money that we have to decide, how much work can we get done? But, yeah, and per unit, we can, we can look into that. Like I said, 68,000 per unit of total cost, but that includes, you know, roofs, site work.
Right. Right. I just feel like the apartments themselves were like cheaply done. And I know, like, when you were here in 2020, I wrote it down, make it a place where residents are really proud to live. And I feel like this whole project totally missed the mark on that. Like, it doesn't look, I mean, it looks a little better, but it doesn't look $11.4 million better to me. So I'm disappointed in that all the way around.
Have you walked the hallways? Have you been in the building today or in the last week or in the last month?
I haven't been.
I'm talking specifically about Century Terrace.
No, I haven't been in a couple of months.
Are the elevators working now?
I believe both of them are fully operational and fully rehabbed at this point, yeah.
What about the bed bug issue that was going on that was pretty highly publicized? Has that gotten under control? Or where are we at with that?
I would have to check in with property management on that. I haven't heard a report on that in a while, so I'm hoping it's good news, but.
Can we get an update on that? I guess if we went through all of this, I guess I wonder if that's where we would have started. Do you know what I mean? Like, why would we invest all the money in fixtures and that if we didn't have a bed bug issue under control to begin with?
Well, when Clinton was here, he said he did the apartments up and down, around the apartment and sideways. But I still get reports from people who still have a problem.
Okay. I've heard things, but since I don't live there, I wouldn't know.
No, I just talked to people yesterday.
I guess I want to piggyback on one thing that Councilmember Bachman mentioned with the FAB system. So if we didn't do a FAB system and it's still a key to entry, do you know, is there like security systems that show who's coming and leaving that building?
There are camera systems.
Okay. And those are operational?
Yes.
Like, they work?
As smart as I'm aware. I think they're relatively new.
Okay.
We took that out of the scope because the Housing Commission was replacing those already.
Okay. I mean, because I see the FAB system as a key replacement, but I also see it as like a security thing, too. So if there was an issue, you know who's come in and out of that building? Because each FAB is identifiable by who's it been issued to. So I just wanted to make sure there was some level of security.
I would really like you to go through Century Terrace. I've been in there. And honestly, pretty disappointed in some of the interior work, especially with the painting. I don't think the contractors, why do you put down new carpeting and then you paint the walls and the hallways? And you now have, you've now dripped paint just on the railings and carpeting? Those kind of things are really discouraging to the people that live there. So I'm a concern, I have concerns about that.
Yeah, and like I said, we have, we're still working on common areas in Century Terrace. And we still need to go through and punch and do that sign off. So all the units have been approved, but the common areas have not yet. So that should be addressed and will be, yeah, brought up in that kind of punch walk through.
Are the elevators working?
Yes, I believe they both are. I could double check on that, but I believe both the modernizations are completed as well.
And then the windows were replaced? I know, was it this fall that had come up at a council meeting? Some of those were not the right size or they weren't.
Up to code.
Up to code as far as like fire, like if there was a fire, to get out of them? So they were doing something with windows, I believe, at that point in time you had mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a concern. I think the building official, they did look into it and they were up to code. I don't think they required egress like they originally thought.
No, you don't allow smoking in the building, right?
Right.
How come every night there's all this marijuana smoke? That's where you're gonna get it. People said they reported it and nobody's checked on it.
Okay. But that's, again, I'll have to check in with management on that.
I think it's on the third floor.
Okay.
Just so you know.
So I guess one thing that concerns me a little bit is there just seems to be a lack of knowledge all around on where the status is of things, if that makes sense. And I'm not, I'm not trying to pinpoint that on anybody, but like, we're asking questions and it's, well, we have to ask management or we have to do that. Would it be better to get a presentation and have all these people in the room so we can get answers?
So Jonathan's with Commonwealth. Mark Sikaki is here. He's the acting executive director. So I'm grateful the Housing Commission did come. So the thought was to talk about the Commonwealth project, probably some of the questions about bed bugs and some of the other operational, better directed towards Mark.
Yeah, I think maybe if a comprehensive, you know, question list is sent out that we can respond to.
Okay, that makes sense. I just, I don't want it to come off like we're beating up on you because some of these questions you can't answer, and I get that. But I also don't know that we knew as a council necessarily what the scope was gonna be. So maybe some of our questions aren't appropriate for what the intention was of your presentation.
Yep.
So.
Understood.
Is there a site manager? Like, do you have a site manager for the construction?
Construction?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Are they there, like, daily?
Yes, they're there right now, I think at least. We're getting towards the end, so I think they're there at least three days a week.
Okay.
I still think you should walk through the building.
Yeah, absolutely. When it's complete, I will. And when doing the final punch, but, yeah.
When's that completion date?
The completion date. So as I mentioned, waiting on the generator, so end of July, early August at this point is, is when, and really at this point, it's just some common area work. Like I said, we're already filling the buildings up and we only have a few vacant units that are gonna be filled this month. But then some, just some site work and some other electrical work that needs to be completed.
So when this is done, can we as a council arrange a tour of the building? Just the end?
I can work with the Housing Commission to arrange that.
All right. Just because I feel like we're probably gonna have a lot of questions, so it'd be pretty valuable, I think, if we can actually have eyes on it to answer some of those questions when people ask us.
Absolutely. And the way this kind of, the Lytec program works, previously when it was public housing, you know, you have a fixed budget and a certain amount of capital improvements. Now it's really judged, or the property operates with cash flow like a typical private development would. So the, once, you know, operations, once it's operating as projected, there should be extra money to reinvest and continue to, and make these improvements and pick up on some of these things that we had to cut through the development.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. If we could maybe, Mark, if you're available, just to introduce yourself.
Interim Operations Manager. So I'd be happy to answer some of those management questions if you, if we get those, definitely. But the bed bug situation is, there was a dog brought in the other day, and I think they were down to like three units that we found them in. So it's, there's a new pest company. We've addressed it, I think, in a pretty strategic manner.
And the common areas open for everybody to use now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. So, you know, new, it's a new commission, so we're still trying to get up to speed on the whole process and how it's working and how it's going. But I'll be happy to come back to a council meeting and, you know, give you a full management report.
I assume you've been through Century Terrace?
Yep, just, just one time. We looked at some vacant units.
What did you think the construction were?
Well, I think there's some punch list items to do. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Okay, where are we? Citizens Comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Seeing non-heel, Mr. Campbell.
So Tom Herndon, our new fire chief, starting Monday, about to get working on that fire truck. And the US 31 sinkhole, I believe the contractor started today, was out there. So hopeful to get that completed before July 4th. We have had some delays with the contractor on the steps, but we're working. Lucas has been in contact. I appreciate his diligence and just a couple of things happen. We're hopeful to get that completed soon. So thanks, everyone, for their patience.
Thank you. Any other officials and staff? Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to thank Chief Glass and everybody else who was involved in the Kids Safety Day recently. I think that was a great event for our community. Heard a lot of positives from locals, kids and their families. And I think it's just a great.
from locals, kids and their families. And I think it's just a great opportunity for public involvement.
That it?
That was it for me.
Mr. Gorbowski?
Yep. Yep. I want to do the same as Seth did. I appreciate I went down to the Kids' Day. A lot of people there, a lot of presenting agencies, showing the helicopter, the police cars, fire trucks. And everybody did a great job down there. So thanks to everybody that was there. Great. If everybody hasn't read, I know they're talking about the traffic situation on River Street. Mark at the museum had an article about the two-way traffic, how it came about back in years ago. And so I thought people should know that, you know, because considering traffic each way and all this stuff. So however they're gonna do it, I've been cutting all the, all the articles on that, say, letter to the editor and all that. So I hope everybody reads them and has an opinion on them. Also, the Old Kirk Museum is trying to get different people to come in. They're putting out posters for all the historic buildings around town, trying to get people to come in and see them. And so you get a chance for visitors coming into town, doing the Ramso and Fire Department. And so I'm gonna give the Fire Department the information on that so they can go to the meeting. So it's quite a bit trying to get visitors to come to Manistee. So I appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
Fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the Kids' Day. It was great. And my kids enjoyed it. So thank you for everybody that was involved with that. And then I just wanted to mention, I know I've had a lot of people ask about the golf carts and side-by-sides, and if we could maybe have a discussion on that, to see if that's something that we could entertain as.
So ATVs, are we talking about?
Yeah.
So I think the position is, Chief Glass, if they're street legal, if they have blink turn signals and.
For them to make those legal through Secretary of State, but there's certain things that they have to qualify. So Secretary of State requires them to have a, a list of things. And now side-by-sides qualify.
Right.
So the current opinion is that if you want to have your vehicle registered, it's not a golf cart, you go through Secretary of State, or it's a golf cart, nothing in between at this point. Are you asking for a work session or something different?
Yeah. So I know a lot of people are saying, are we, are they allowed? Are they not allowed? Is that something that's the city has to allow, or is it the state has to allow?
So right now, the only thing that we allow is golf carts. And if you have an off-road vehicle that you register through Secretary of State, they give you a license plate that's considered, is considered a low-speed vehicle, it's registered through the state of Michigan, those are allowed. But I will tell you, a lot, a lot of those vehicles for safety standards don't meet the standards of the Secretary of State. So, but there is a path by the Secretary of State to register those vehicles if you meet those qualifications on the TDR 52 form. I would recommend the city maintain that position so that we can uphold those safety standards the state of Michigan require. That's my opinion as a stance today.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions about that path, they can send them to the police department. I'd be happy to walk them through what that looks like. And then the golf carts are the golf carts.
All right. Maybe put something on Facebook or our website or something to educate people on that?
On how to register through Secretary of State?
Yeah.
That means, okay.
Yeah.
You can do it.
Sure. Okay.
Anything else? Nope, that's it. Mr. Bach?
Was there anything happening with the Fire Department? Was that roof taken care of? And we got that bottom money to repair all that? Ain't that tough off our bid, or?
We had discussion this morning about, yeah, so we know with Shippe, we're allowed to take off that, that one chimney that we think is, well, it is leaking. So I talked to, we talked this morning and our staff about making sure that moves forward. Sean, do you have any updates on that?
That's, that's pretty much it. We, we were held up because of the historical issue with the chimney. So that's cleared now. So we're gonna put it out to bid. We'll take the chimney, we'll take the chimney off and then redo the roof in that section. And then along with all the other improvements.
Okay, the wall, the step?
All the wall, steps. There'll be site work done. The whole project is gonna go on.
When do you anticipate that happening? This year, this season?
Going out to bid will be within, probably within a month for sure. And then our thinking is, we gotta talk to the city a little bit and Bill and Ed. But in terms of timing, we may want to open it up. We have contractors that prefer to give a large window, so they have, they can kind of work their schedules. But we'd bid it soon and they give the option to fall and spring construction is what I'm thinking. But we haven't really talked about through the schedule yet.
Kind of hope that by this time next year, that'll all be done?
That'd be ideal, yes. Yeah, okay. So I'd be glad to be done with it.
I'll put it on my notes.
All right.
Hello, we're selling that Waterworks Building on First Street.
That was a discussion. I think the historical commission's basically, gotta be out of there very soon. They have a couple more pieces left, and then their intention is to leave it. I think we could do an RFP for a developer to, you know, develop it into something. Or we could, we could sell it. And I think there's.
People asking me.
Okay.
I want to give thanks to three companies that are locally owned that did a wonderful thing. And if you go by Reese Park, you're going to see a, a brand, not a brand new, but you're gonna see a very nice green barn that's about 12 by 20 feet. Fisher Storage, which is located on Parkdale next to the West Coast Station, had this green barn. And they said, would the Saints like to have it? And the Saints said, we'd love to have it. How do we get it here? Well, Sidorsky stepped up and they created a gravel pit or gravel area to lay this on at the park. And they also used, loaned the truck to load it on. And Zoopin, that's the third company, came with their crane and took it off the truck and put it in place at the park. And this is, this is just such a wonderful gift of time and equipment and energy. I just want to thank the Zoopin Company, Sidorsky, and Fisher Storage for this wonderful gift that they gave to Reese Park for the Falls Park. They've been storing equipment in their garages that the directors have. They've stored it all over the place. This is gonna make life a whole lot easier for them. So we're very lucky to have companies like that in our town. That's it. Flumberg?
I was just wondering if there's any update on the Hampton Inn opening or whatever's happening with that?
I don't have one to share. I don't know if, yeah, for anyone else to.
Not that I can speak to.
I know they're moving quickly. I think they're trying to open as soon as possible, but I don't have an update.
Okay. Because original was June 1st, right?
They're hoping early June.
Right.
That was an ambitious, I think, piece in the middle of work.
Yeah, I did, too. But, okay. I just wondered if we knew anything more about when that might be coming by. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Consideration of a closed session, attorney-client privilege communications request to convene a closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, PA 267 of 1976, pursuant to MCL 15 dot 2681H to discuss attorney-client privilege communication dated May 31, 2023 regarding the City of Manistee Housing Commission. At this time, council could take action and proceed into a closed session. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Heather, would you please take it for all?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gorbowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are back in open session. It's 9:47 PM.
Oh, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.